Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point, approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, a minute shall stand approved from June 7th, 2021, regular council meeting minutes. Okay. At this point, we do have a guest with us this evening. Jennifer Arps from the new executive director, relatively new executive director with the CIC. I've been council's representative on that board now for the last six years and had the opportunity to get to know Jennifer fairly well. And I think the folks who made this decision to move her up made a very wise decision. And now we're gonna let her come to the microphone and just introduce herself and make a few little comments. Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I don't know. It's like different from normal and it doesn't work. Thanks.
All right. Well, hello. Like Dan said, I'm Jennifer. I think I know about the majority of you guys. I don't think I've met you officially. And Ken, I think I've met you at our annual meeting or one of the CICs.
Somewhere along the way.
Yes. But yeah, for the majority, I've known all of you for quite some time. I've known Molly for a very long time. But I'm very excited to be with the CIC and continue, you know, what's already been going on with not only Henry County but the city of Napoleon. And there's a lot of good things going on right now, which we can talk about in a little bit. But, you know, as far as just in generality goes, you know, my door and my phone are always open for you guys. I know Lori reached out and we had coffee and that was great. But the same goes for any of you. If any of you guys ever wanna talk or chat or even question something that the CIC is doing or anyone is doing, you know, feel free. That's what we're there for, so.
Do you have any goals for the CIC? Can you talk to us about Henry Haz?
Oh, yeah. I have lots of goals. Off the record, you can't line up both of them. Yeah, like no pressure and lots of goals. But no, I did, you know, I just completed my capstone project for my OEDI certification, which I received Friday. But my Henry Haz that I presented back in March, which is basically, yeah, I wanted to create a community identity because I felt like we were lacking in that as far as Henry County as a whole, you know, kind of, you know, if anyone would Google Henry County, you know, what would they find? And it was kind of not much between the courthouse images and, you know, a little bit of the river, so.
Well, the paragraph started, once snowed is a great black swamp. What a great way to sell yourself, right?
I know. You know what? I really did throw it out there. And actually, Monday, May 24th, I had to give my presentation to the OEDI panel. And I did a brief summary of what I did for you guys. And at the end, they kind of laughed and said, "You really came out and said that?" And I said, "Yeah, I did."
Yeah.
But they thought that was strategic. And I was like, "Well, that was my goal, was to be strategic." I knew who my audience was, you know. I pulled all the mayors and the commissioners together. And I wanted everyone to be on board because I feel like you guys are all public servants for a reason. You know, you love either Henry County or you love Napoleon. So we should represent it to the best we can. So I came up with Henry Haz because we have all these things, these assets, whether it's for site selectors or residential needs, you know, to get citizens in our city limits or the county or other municipalities. But we have all these things. So I did, last Friday, purchase the domain, henryhas.com. I've been working with Thrive Marketing out of Perrysburg to get that developed. They did create a logo. And I don't think I have it here with me. But I can do that website. However, I told him he's created the logo and everything. It's so pretty that I don't wanna mess it up. So I'd like to find some money to have them do the website for me to make it more professional. But we're getting there and I'm excited. And hopefully that starts going live soon because it's done. The logo is done. I just want, I've been strategic about it because I didn't wanna like start it without it being 110% done and ready. Like I wanted it to have what I want to say, what I want to be shown, you know, about our community. And once it's there, then it will be live, so. So that was my big thing. And that goes for site selectors too, you know, with the CIC. We get those state leads and project leads. And, you know, we can have a perfect building or a perfect site. But a lot of times now, they're looking for workforce. They're looking for housing. They're looking for quality of life. And I think that we have those. We just need to promote it better. So that's where it stemmed from. So that's my kind of, my individual goal. And then, of course, you know, I think the CIC can improve on our marketing of our inventory that we do have, our buildings and available properties, and work on that. But it's just everyone coming together and working towards the same goal.
Any general questions for Jennifer right at this minute? Okay, if not, at this time, I would like to request an executive session with Jennifer and the CIC for the purpose of economic development.
Can we be a little specific with that? Have you?
What do I need to say other than economic development?
I can give you some language if you'd prefer, if that makes it easier.
Okay, listen closely, Roxanne.
So our rules state to consider confidential information related to marketing plans, specific business strategy, trade secrets, personal finance statements, yada yada, of applicant, of an applicant for economic development assistance. And then there are two subheadings. The information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance or a unanimous quorum of the public body determines by roll call vote that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant.
So A and B, A or B?
A and B, A or B, yeah. However you would like to term it.
Sounds good to me.
When we go under economic development as a broad statement, we could run into trouble. I'd prefer.
A sounds very good, sir. You have it? Okay.
Just what you said. Thanks for that.
With that in mind, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roxanne, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes. So we will, at this time, go into a relatively brief economic development section.
Do you want to do it here or can we do it across the hall?
At this point, I need a motion to come out of executive session for economic development for...
With these specifics previously listed.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes. And no action was taken. Citizen communication, is there any citizens out here? I don't believe so, but that wants to share anything. Or if anybody on WebEx needs to share something, please type the message in and we will get to that later in the meeting. Okay, report of council committees. Electric committee met on June 4th. Lori?
We recommend that council accept the BOPA recommendation to approve the June PSCAF.
Thank you. Water, Sewer, Refuge, Recycling, and Litter Committee did not meet on, sorry, I said June 4th. That was June 14th, wasn't it, your meeting?
Yes.
Yes. So correct that. But that committee did not meet on June 14th due to lack of agenda items. Municipal Properties Building Land Use and Economic Development did not meet due to lack of agenda items. And the Parks and Recreation Committee did not meet tonight due to lack of agenda items. Okay, moving on to I, introduction of new ordinances. A rare accursion, a rare occasion here. We have no new ordinances tonight. So we'll move on to second readings. Resolution number 019-21, resolution adopting the 2022 tax budget for the city of Napoleon, Ohio, as required in section 5705.28 and 5705.281 of the Ohio Revised Code, and directing the finance director to file the same with the county auditor and declaring an emergency. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Kelly?
Thank you. I have nothing to add. It's just the inside and outside mill tax levies.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes. And that moved on, moves on to third read. And speaking of third reads, we have ordinance number 017-21, an ordinance establishing a fund to be named American Rescue Allocation Fund as required pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and declaring an emergency. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kelly, anything new on that one?
Nothing new, thank you.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes. So that is passed on third and final reading there. Good of the city. Item one, discussion of action, discussion or action, approval of the power supply cost adjustment factor for June 2021 as a three-month average factor of 0.01550 and JV2 0.035391. Mrs. Sinclair, anything you need to add?
I don't believe, I think it's still trending lower than it has in the past, so it's all good news.
Okay. And we need a motion for that, correct?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Roxanne, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes. Item number two, discussion, action, approval of plans and specifications for the 2021 miscellaneous street improvement project, Michigan Avenue and North Sheffield Avenue. Young man, do you have a report?
Yes, we're just requesting approval of the plan and specs. The project out for bid. The estimate for the project's $450,000. Completion date, as outlined in the bid documents, is October 30th, 2021. Just requesting approval so we can advertise this project and take bids in three weeks.
And when do you expect to get started then? Probably late summer?
Yeah, it'd be late summer. If we open bids in July, we probably have contracts ready end of August or so. So they'd probably get started in the summer, early September.
I know I've had that question, so I was curious. Anything else?
Well, I didn't see anything about water lines. Is Michigan?
It is Michigan, but we're not placing alarm lines. It's not in the budget.
None at all?
It's not in the budget.
Okay.
Anything else?
So we need a motion.
Okay, motion to do such.
No motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
If we don't do the water line now, I don't set the budget, are we gonna tear the street up in three years when we do it?
We haven't had a history of breaks out there. The water line's not in great shape.
Does the water line run underneath the road?
It's under the edge of the road for a portion of it.
When was the last time that street was paved?
I believe it was paved when it was built.
A long time ago.
Fifty years, forty years.
I was pretty young.
We're trying to replace the curbs because the curbs are essentially dust in portions. Water line's not in great shape. We don't have a lot of breaks in that area. Most of our breaks occur on West Main and Fort Wick and Enterprise. If we had the money available, I would love to replace the water line, but we don't, we only have one water line project in the budget for this year
Okay.
because the water fund is depressed.
Okay.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes. Okay, number three, discussion, action to accept the Safe Routes to Schools, SRTS grant from ODOT. Continue, please.
I spoke with Joel. We were awarded the grant from ODOT for Safeties to Schools in the approximate amount of $207,000. We weren't certain we needed any action taken, but he requested that we at least take a simple motion. We did have legislation allowing us to apply, but if we wanted to take a simple motion to reaffirm acceptance, it wouldn't hurt anything.
Chad, this is the partnership between us and the schools to get those sidewalks built and those kinds of things, right? Okay.
I worked, I worked with Rebel League. They're the ones that did our master plan. I worked with Rebel League and the schools together. And Glenn and I applied earlier this year. And we were notified a week or two ago that we received that grant.
I think it's just important that people realize that the city and school are working together on projects, so.
And some of the work the school is currently doing with their parking lot expansion, that also includes some additional blocks.
Yep.
When we looked at our application, ODOT would not fund any, any type of blocks or multi-use path on school property. So the school is undertaking those pieces, including what's along West Moreland because it has to be outside of the driveway. So what we prepared was in conjunction with that. And what they're doing, we were able to leverage as city and school in-kind effort.
Okay.
So that did help us in our application.
Perfect. And this includes that Jan Throad section, right?
The Jan Throad is a separate item. That is a transportation alternative projects grant. I've commissioned those plans, hoping to have those turned in by the end of the month. That project will take a multi-use path from the railroad to Ritter Park, down the steep embankment, which it sort of swings out so it's not steep, ties into the Ritter Park path system. And then is extended, we'll call it the east early end of Ritter Park by the raw water intake. There will then be a path from there that'll come down to the city property down Front Street and connect to Perry. That's a separate grant that I got a couple years ago.
Yeah, okay.
Is that expected in 2022?
That project is slated for 2022. Safeties to Schools, we haven't been given a definitive date yet, but it will probably be a 2024 project. ODOT projects tend to, there's a lot of planning involved. You have to environmental studies and a lot of other paperwork.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes. Item number four, discussion of action, June 2021, replacement pages to the codified ordinances, direct the law director to draft legislation. Anything you want us to say, sir?
I mean, it's, it's the normal thing that we manage, I think, twice a year at this point. It's gonna be change, changes to our, our own ordinances and then changes to state law that affect our ordinances. So it'll be a mix of both. It's prepared and ready to go.
Okay. Motion?
So motion.
Motion to direct the law director to draft the legislation. Let me rephrase that.
Motion.
You got that? Okay. Call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes. Okay. Discussion or action, item number five, 2021 street striping project, directing the law director to draft legislation. Chad?
Yes, when we were preparing the bid documents for our annual street striping project, every other year, we do the whole city. And on the off years, we generally budget a small amount to touch up the street striping. When we were preparing the bid documents, Roxanne brought to my attention that the project was omitted from our master bid ordinance. It's one of those when we do it every other year, we missed it. We wanted, we were just requesting that council, direct the law director to draft the legislation so we can bring that back to council in two weeks and put that out for bid.
So do I have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation for the street striping project?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes. Item number six, discussion of act, or action, second quarter budget adjustments, refer to committee and direct the law director to draft legislation with suspension. Any, Kelly?
Thank you. This will go to the Finance and Budget Committee for recommendation to the full council. And the reason it has the law director to draft the legislation too because we would like it on for July 6th with suspension so we can close the month.
Okay, thank you.
If we don't do it then, Kelly, is that gonna stop departments from spending money until July the 19th?
It won't allow the departments in our office to show what truly is in July until we close the month because our software doesn't allow us to. So they can keep spending, but it won't show the true picture.
This is a change. And I know we did it this way in March. And Kelly, we talked about this, I know we did. You know, usually we do refer to the committee. Committee reports back, then we direct the law director to draft legislation. That's typically the way it goes. But then tonight, we also did PCAF differences, right? And those are on their way. Is there a way to do that with the quarterly budget adjustments without legislation, without directing you, Billy? How do we do that?
I mean, certainly we can. I mean, if we're gonna change some stuff, we're gonna have to use the legislation to change the budget. If that's what you're asking, I'm not really sure.
Okay, okay.
I think there are some short-term adjustments that Kelly can make on her own. We've got sort of blanket legislation that the city votes on at the end of the year for the, for the coming year.
Yeah.
But generally, when we make budget adjustments, we go through the, this process here, so.
But usually, it's a two-step process, not all one, right? I mean, that's...
Yeah.
Why is it, why is it different?
So we can close the books on July the 6th.
But we've never had to do it that way before, except March?
I think March was the first time we did it this way, Kelly. Is that right? Or did we do it last year the same way?
No, we've, as far as I can remember, we've done it like this. I know when I first started, we had a special meeting to have Billy direct, to direct to do the legislation. But this is a way to not have to have a special meeting, but not have to hold it up to. But if it's until July 21st or 19th, I'll just send out an email to the department heads and we'll deal with it.
I just want, I want them to be able to spend their money. You know what I mean? I don't wanna, I don't wanna hamstring the department heads. Or am I making, am I making a mountain out of molehill here? I don't know. I'm asking questions.
They'll still be able to spend their money, but they won't be able to see what they really truly have in either one of our department because the software doesn't allow us to.
I understand, yep.
But to deal with it if that council wants.
Does it matter to council? Maybe it doesn't matter.
Buddy, how about?
Looking for opinions.
Yeah. So it's just a matter of if it goes to the Finance and Budget Committee versus does not?
It's gonna go to the Finance and Budget Committee first anyways, right? Next, next Monday night, we'll have a Finance and Budget Committee meeting. Typically then, the next council meeting, the budget committee refers out, says, "Yes, these numbers are good."
Right.
Then the, then council, law director to draft legislation, brings it back, next meeting, we're done. This way, we're done basically two weeks earlier than that. Because the legislation is drafted, basically it says, maybe I'm speaking out of turn here. Basically it says, "See attachment." The attachment of the budget adjustments.
Yep.
We vote on it. All right? Again, maybe I'm making a, a mountain out of molehill here, and that's fine, I just.
Process is somewhat truncated in this situation.
Yeah, we're just, we're shortening it up, right, yeah. I'm trying to make sure we're not, you know, I, I want the, I want the department heads to be able to do what they need to do, but is that going to affect you? Chief O'Brien, if, if you don't know how much money you have, is that, how does that affect you for, for?
So, I have.
As the sitting department head, closest to me.
Well, um, I actually do have, uh, three budget adjustments on this one, on the second quarter one.
Okay.
So I already know which ones are going to be adjusted, so I already know what my books are.
Right.
I can't speak for all the other department heads. I don't know exactly how that works, if, if they're waiting for money to spend. If it does not happen at this time, yes, it would delay me on purchasing a couple of VFW donations.
Yeah.
Going into that account or the replacement of that money for the mobile repeater into that capital one.
I don't want to, I don't want to wait, you know what I mean?
Correct, and I wouldn't want to wait either, but I do recall like the previous process being that it would go to the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, then it would come back to council, then the legislation would happen, and then.
Right.
You know, go on, so, um, however, it's, if we have to wait, we have to wait. If we don't, then we don't, but, um.
So Finance and Budget would still have to approve it before it went forward, so.
Yeah, I mean, they've got to prove it either way.
It's not, it's not reducing the opportunity to have eyes on things or any, anything like that. This is just a.
It just makes it a little, yeah.
Speed it up a little bit.
Yeah. You, you're going to have, I guess, one, fewer opportunity for all council to see it, right? Because you'd see it the old way, you'd see it when you, when you direct, and then also when you, when you agree to it, you know what I mean? Again, I'm just asking the question. For all of me, we can do it, you know, the way it's, it's as presented this time, and then do we want to take a look and maybe do it the other way next time and see if there's a big difference? Is that, is that a possibility? Or explore this conversation a little more? I don't want to make a snap decision tonight. I know these are kind of already prepared. Knowing Billy, the legislation's probably already drafted.
It is ready.
Yeah. And knowing Kelly, probably the numbers are probably 95% complete, but she's waiting on the last couple of days to get them done. Because numbers are still changing, I'm going to assume. She's muted, so.
I'm just curious what, I mean, if there's a reason for the process to be the way that it is, so if that's not the best way to do it, then does it need to be?
I don't know, I'm, yeah, yeah, I don't know. Maybe it's something we talked about in Finance and Budget Committee.
My recommendation at this time, uh, I haven't had a lot of time to think about this issue either.
Right.
But my recommendation would be to do this as is, as it is written at this point in time.
Okay.
And maybe the Finance and Budget Committee can discuss this in a little more detail at, anybody? I know Joe is the chairman of that committee, but who else is on that committee?
Mayor is.
Okay. Can discuss this issue in a little more detail.
It's okay, Jay, to do that?
At the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, but I would like to see going on right now the way it is.
That's, that's fine.
To make it easier.
Okay.
But to still.
Let's have a conversation. That's fine, yeah.
So, do I have a motion to refer this to committee and then direct the law, can this all be in the same motion?
It can.
And direct the law director to draft legislation with suspension?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes. And then not just this issue, but the discussion of the, how to do this should both Roxanne be on that committee's agenda.
Yeah.
For next Monday night.
So it'll be budget adjustments and then process for budget adjustments.
Yes.
Something along those lines, however, it gets worded, yeah.
Okay, item number seven, discussion of action, approval, uh, of a donation of five new bicycles and life vests to the Napoleon Police Department from the Napoleon Area Schools. You know anything about this, sir? You know nothing about it, okay.
What's a left vest?
I'm assuming it's a life vest. Like a reflective vest.
That's what I'm thinking it means. Wouldn't you think it's a li- life vest?
It's a reflective vest, I'm going to assume. It does say left.
Yeah, correct.
It's what it would change next.
It'd be the, it would be. So it's five bicycles and the reflective vest.
Reflective vest, yeah.
Okay.
It wouldn't be left vest, but.
Yeah.
It's, you, you wear though.
This just in. Did you read it? You got it handed in?
You read it. I don't have my glasses on.
Uh, thirty-five, uh, new bikes and some, it does say left vest to the city, so I'm going to assume, it's reflective stuff for, so when you're riding a bike that were all kinds of colored and, so it's easy to see when you're riding your bikes. And then the bikes get used around the school, it also gets used just around Burger Patrol, right?
I'm putting the poor officer in a tough position.
He's in a null and situation. Chief, I gotta ride a bike now. That's, that's his fear, right? He's agreed with all this stuff, next thing you know, he's, I'm taking your car, you get the bike now. Rats.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept this donation?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes. Yeah, I know, sometimes I try to speed things up a little too fast here, but.
No, it says left vest on the.
Okay.
On the paper too, so.
Okay. Item eight, discussion or action to accept the award of $4,967.78 from the Ohio Law Enforcement Body Armor Program. You know anything, sir?
This, I believe, is the annual, um, grant that they do for their body armor.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes. Okay.
How often does your body armor get replaced?
Every five years.
Every five years?
Yeah.
Now, is this, uh, the only thing I didn't know is if it covers one or two, I, I can't remember exactly what Chief Mack said, but it's either one or two vests.
Probably two, I think, or twenty-five hundred dollars.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
And just so you know, Lieutenant Smith will sit back there for a month at a time, won't get a single question. Chief Mack will sit back there for three months, won't get a single question. You're here and you get all kinds of, all kinds of things. So thanks for being here on this wonderful Monday night.
Okay, with that in mind, let's go around the table, and let's start with our acting city manager.
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Law Director?
I have nothing as well.
Molly?
Uh, nothing for me as well, thank you.
I'm not going to break it.
Okay.
You're going to, aren't you?
I need to, sorry.
All right.
Mrs. Sinclair?
Right, um, I have a spot that I sit on with my leg up every single night, and I thought to myself this morning, um, I, the only way I knew there was a storm going on last night was because I could look straight out the window. I don't know if anyone noticed, but I didn't have a single flicker to my.
Sure.
Lights or my television or nothing. And, uh, I just think that, I appreciate our electric department and the hard work to keep us prepared for events like last night because we didn't notice any outages.
Right. And driving around, you saw branches down. You know, I branched down in my yard, you know what I mean?
In my own yard, yep.
Yeah.
So. But not on the power lines.
Yeah.
Anything else, ma'am?
Um, hmm, um, I just wanted to mention, I, I'm not positive on the registration for the NAPMAS 5K, but that's coming up this weekend, and I know that, that money is donated to the city's Parks Department, so I encourage anyone that's able to run to get registered and, uh, and support that, and if not, just come out and watch, and then be prepared for the following weekend because the Napoleon Rotary Triathlon will be taking place, and we get to utilize the new pool, and it should be a great event, so. And registration is still open for that, too. And the Pickers is also this weekend. You need a mulligan.
We are still talking, so.
Yeah, lots going on. I wa, I did, uh, go to the Simon Gertie Fest also this past weekend, and so. It was just really great to see people out and about and walking around downtown, and even though it was pretty hot, it was, uh, it was nice.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
It's really nice to see the city and the school working together in multiple ways. That's, that's really nice. It's also really nice, that's the first time we had an executive session in there since.
Year and a half at least.
A year and a half-ish? You know what I mean? It's been a long time since it's been over there, so. Um, it's also nice to see everybody pretty much here, so Jen, welcome back. So, um, um, otherwise, um, you know, garage salesmen going on, I know we got the, the, the Pickers Paradise going on, lot of stuff and going on, just, you know, make sure you're just vigilant as you drive around that, you know, there's always little kids running around. Took the boy to the, the pool again on Sunday night and they had a blast, so. It is really, really good time, and a really nice crowd in there. Lifeguard is doing a good job. Just really, everybody's doing a, a really, really good job all the way around, so. I do have, I need to ask for an executive session for economic development, the first one pursuant to.
Hold on, I can get the rules out.
Maintenance to be kept confidential.
So, uh, the first one is information directly related to a request for economic development, provided under various statutes here, and involves, uh, public infrastructure, extension of utility services.
Yes, that one, yep, yep, so. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just two items. One, uh, I'm coming back to the law director again. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July the 5th. However, that is the legal Fourth of July holiday since the Fourth is on a Sunday. So do we need legislation to move the next meeting to Tuesday, July the 6th?
We would not need legislation.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, that, well, council president can do that on his own. Um, but since you're sitting pro temp and since we've got everybody here, it might be a good idea just to have a vote and move it to the date that you feel more appropriate.
Okay, can I have a motion to move our first meeting in July to Tuesday, July 6th at the regular time of seven o'clock due to the Fourth of July holiday?
Motion.
Second.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes. Thank you, sir. And item two, or maybe this is for the mayor or the fire chief, uh, one question I have received is a number of communities, I guess, were, some are having fireworks, some are not having fireworks. Do you know where we stand on the fireworks issue?
As far as it will go, July the 4th.
That's what I, that's the way I understand it.
It's on the pretty schedule.
Same, same fireworks company, uh, which is Melrose's, uh, that we've already been through their paperwork and verified all their insurance and things of that nature, so we are, uh, we are set for a go for the Fourth.
No supply problem?
Not that they relate any of that, so they did not, that usually does run through, uh, the Parks and Rec Director, uh, Mr. Cotter, but, uh, did not, they sent the paperwork as they would always and did not discuss any of that supply issue with us.
So that would be standard being on Sunday the 4th, then?
On the Fourth of July, it's for real fireworks.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Hayes?
I have nothing.
Mr. Durham?
I have nothing.
Kelly?
I have nothing.
Okay. With that in mind, do I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of economic development?
The utility one.
Before you.
The utility one, put that down. So, uh, let's see, there's, there are a lot of words here, but information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance through, to be provided under, uh, the quoted, uh, I guess revise, revised code sections and involves a public infrastructure improvement or the extension of utility services.
You got that, Roxanne?
Okay. Type fast.
So moved.
Second.